Welcome to the town meeting information session. And we're at a new venue for this. It was designed to be a little more convenient in terms of parking and access and so forth. I guess my first question is, make sure everybody, there were handouts at the door when you came in. There's a copy of the Blue Finance Committee booklet that came from the printers, obviously, and is a great guide for you to read over the weekend as you prepare for town meeting next Monday. And then there's a handout at the entrance as well, which covers the slide materials that I'll be presenting this evening and a town meeting next week. My first question is, is are there any new town meeting reps in the room this evening? Just to get a sense of the audience.
Town meeting reps?
New town meeting reps? New town meeting reps? Okay.
How new?
All right, yeah, all right. How new? No, and the reason I ask is, you know, and I won't belabor the point, but again, what tonight's session is, is really an information session for you to prepare for the town meeting on, that begins on Monday and will continue on Thursday. And, but what it's not, is it's not meant to be a mini-town meeting or a debate session and so forth. So, again, the purpose of the session is for me to provide information to you that you can consider and contemplate and examine until town meeting begins, and also to take time to answer any questions that you may have about the articles that'll be considered for town meeting next week. So without further ado, I'll get started. Again, we'll reconvene here on Monday night at 7:30. And... Let me just move this. There'll be some initial presentations at the front, and I've included them in the handout. I'm not going to go over them tonight, but it at least gives you some background in terms of overview of the financial forecast for the town, and some information in there about the ARPA work that the town has done, which is funding that came from the state government through the federal government as part of our... As, you know, as part of our efforts to recover from the pandemic. So, the, so, again, and there'll be presenters here on Monday evening who'll go through that, but generally, that's informational and background, and so we won't take time to go through that this evening. What I do provide is a slide, it's Slide 38, and I know the slides are numbered, but they're, I know they're hard to push through, because some of the pages, the numbers get pushed off, but the, this slide just shows you how we're, an overview of how we're going to allocate the free cash funding at this town meeting. And then the first item will be a consent agenda, and the moderator introduced the consent agenda, as you may recall, a few years ago, as a way of addressing with articles which we anticipate will not have much debate or discussion, you know, as a way of being more efficient in the meeting. And as you can see, they tend to be towards the front of the warrant, it's Articles 2 through 6, and then 14, 15, 18, and 19. But for tonight's session, I'll go through them, the warrant, in numerical order, and you can stop me at any time, but that's, it at least gives you a sense of how the meeting will flow on Monday evening. And again, the first article was the reports and committees, and again, there's no debate on those articles, so the first article for consideration is Article 2, and this is a consent agenda article, and it's a regularly appearing article at the fall town meeting warrant, and this is, and it's also regularly at spring town meeting warrant, and it's the periodic request from the cemetery commission to appropriate monies from the sale of graves and lots at the cemetery to do improvements at the cemeteries. And as many of you will be familiar, the request is $75,000, and the funding request consists of two components. The first one is a continued completion of the improvements at Fairview Cemetery. You know, we've done the expansion there, the commission has, under David Boyle's direction as superintendent, and now as part of the, you know, the effort to finish that, there's a $35,000 request to install a wrought iron gate at the Rivendick Road entrance, which is new to the cemetery, along with final paving, loam seeding, and hydro seeding. And in addition to that, at the top of the slide, is a $40,000 request to install a niche wall at Fairview Cemetery. And noted in the slide, this would be the second such niche wall, which is becoming very popular for cremated remains at the cemetery. So that's the, that's the action that'll be taken under this article at town meeting. Feel free to raise your hand and stop me at any point. And Article 3 is perennial article at fall town meeting, again, that's why it's on the consent agenda, and this is the transfer $156,842 from free cash to the sewer construction stabilization fund. And the reason that this is done is the funding that's needed and called for and envisioned under these sewer projects, provided for the sewer betterment funds to be a funded portion of that in addition to excluded debt for the early stages. And when the betterment fund was installed, it not only called for the funding from that, but the interest earnings. And the, under state law, since we don't have a special act of the legislature for this project, the rule of thumb under state law is, unless otherwise specified by state law, you have to appropriate all interest earnings to the general fund, treasury. So what the town has done, as part of its financial forecast for this going back, you know, 20 or 30 years, is they did call for the interest earnings. So every fall town meeting, the town treasurer, collector examines the books for the past year, determines the interest earnings that were earned on the interest from the sewer betterment fee, and then we then transfer that into the sewer construction stabilization fund. So that's, that's how it works. You'll see in some slides in your booklet, you know, which we won't put up at the screen at this point in time, we're nearing the end of the funding for the entire sewer project as part of our debt service, and so again, the latter stages call for this interest earnings to go in. So that's what takes place under this article, and again, many of you have been in the town meeting over the years, it's a perpetual request that comes up, and the amount varies, obviously, depending upon the interest rates market. Article 4... Yes, go ahead. Yes?
That's a lot of interest earned.
Yes.
Are we... Is the money deposited, been put into a...
Yes. And you can see at the bottom of the slide, the fund balance is $2.8 million, so it's not insignificant, and with today's interest rates where you can, you can, you can earn about 5%. What Massachusetts does provide is it limits the amount of, the types of investments that cities and towns can invest municipal monies. Many of you, again, I'm probably dating myself, but many of you recall, years ago, there was a scandal, financial scandal in California, because they were financing public monies into derivatives and other market instruments, and obviously, the market collapsed, and it created a financial crisis in California. Massachusetts has always been conservative and continues to be conservative, so there's actually a limit of the type of investment instruments that a municipality can use. Obviously, treasury bills and those type of things are allowed, and they, over the years, they've allowed like utility stocks and so forth, but, so the answer to your question is, yes, it is a significant amount of money, it is invested to the maximum extent possible under the regulations of state law on how you can, you can regulate municipal monies and invest them. Article 4 is a article to fund a collective bargaining agreement. What we have for your consideration this year in this warrant article is an appropriation to fund the, an employment agreement with the firefighters' union. This would be the last union agreement for this three-year period of fiscal years '23 to '25. You may recall, it's spring town meeting, we did one for dispatchers, police, so forth, and we've reached an agreement with the firefighters' union, and we now have to fund that agreement, which makes the ratification official. It's been approved by the select board, it's been approved by the union, and the final step of the approval process is the approval by town meeting. What happens here, and why the amount is significant, is we're funding two fiscal years. The previous fiscal year, which is FY '23, that ended on June 30th, 2023, and we got to fund fiscal year '24, which is for the current year that we began on this July 1st and goes to June 30th. And as you can see in the slide and your handout, it's a three-year agreement. We provided, very similar to the agreements we provided with our other public safety personnel, we provided an adjustment to the hourly rate in the first initial year of the contract, plus 2.5% increase, and then the second, which is the current year, and then next year, the final year, we have a 2.5% increase to the agreement. We also, similar to the other unions, we agreed to add Juneteenth in the list of observed holidays, because the Commonwealth has adopted Juneteenth as a legal holiday. And then there was language regarding station bidding that the union, the chief, was appropriate in terms of allowing for seniority bidding in the event that an officer's position becomes available. And then finally, there was an issue about residency, and it really just goes to the cost of housing and living. The way it is today, in a way it wasn't under the general provisions of civil service, a firefighter has to live within 15 miles of the community and has to live in the Commonwealth. What has happened over the years is that's become challenging because of the high cost of housing, and a number of our neighboring communities, including Drake, Tewksbury, and so forth, have basically relaxed that provision, and we've now done a similar thing. What we've now stated is that a firefighter needs to live within 25 miles of the town's border, and can live across the state line in Southern New Hampshire. So that's what's taking place here. So again, that's the essence of the contract agreement, and again, we, we're seeking your funding to put that into full force and effect. Article 5, that we know action on, Article 5 was, is, we always leave it as a placeholder in case there are issues that arise that, in the current fiscal year's budget. As I mentioned earlier, the fiscal year began over three and a half, basically almost three and a half months ago now, on July 1st. We approved that budget at town meeting in April, so, so when we're preparing the warrant and such over the summer, we always leave a placeholder in case something extraordinary arises that, that needs adjustment. But fortunately, this year, once again, we don't need to take any action under that article. The one thing that will affect us, we believe, but it hasn't happened yet, is we are expecting to be impacted by the state's settling of migrant in, in the hotels, in the, across the Commonwealth, including those in Chelmsford. We've not been impacted by that at this time. The state does provide some funding for that, but again, until it happens, and to the extent to which it happens, it may be something we may have to revisit at spring town meeting, but at this point in time, there's no requested changes to the budget that was approved in this room back in April. Yes?
That raises an interesting question, which is, how, how does the town get contacted about that?
We get a phone call, basically, after it happens. And the reason for that is, is because the state has experienced a lot of pushback from communities, and so they basically, the directive is...
So the agencies will perform whatever action they're doing, they'll place people in places, and then are they required by law to then contact you guys?
Yeah. And the reason for that is, we, we have to provide services for them, namely, education. And so obviously, when that time occurs, I'm using the word "when" because we expect it will occur, we, you know, the superintendent of schools will be notified, our health department will be notified, because there are also health things, immunizations and other, other aspects.
Does the town, as an organization, have that codified in our, like, bylaws, like, what should happen when that happens?
No. We've never experienced this in the past. And because the governor declared a state of emergency, the, any local rules and regulations would be, would be preempted anyway. So we'll see, we'll see how it plays out, but, but anyway, that, just wanted to explain to you, why do you always put this article on that you take no action on? Again, it's a safeguard, because remember, town meeting, if it isn't on the warrant, you can't take any action under it, and we try to avoid, obviously, having to call a special meeting to the extent possible. Um, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry. So it is nothing for the town?
Right. We'll take no action. That's right.
Right, but will we go back to the consent agenda and remove it all from...
No, no. We just say, the action will be, the motion be no action under this article. So that's how it works. Article 6 is another subsequent action article, and that's why it's under the consent agenda, it's at the front of the agenda, and this has to do with the distribution of the, of the opioid settlement abatement fund. As we explained it a year ago at town meeting, in this, in this time, the amount is $24,275. As we explained a year ago, when, when there was basically almost $140,000 appropriation in the initial funding phase for the opioid settlements, this is all done by class action litigation. Massachusetts is a party to that. We, as cities and towns, are a party to it through the state. And there are obviously regulations and requirements on how the monies can be expended and have to be reported and audited. And as noted in the slide, the state requires that all the funding from this opioid settlement be used to, you know, for the related purpose, which is the prevention, harm reduction, harm reduction treatment and recovery from this horrible affliction. So thus far to date, we've received that, that funding amount of the $24,275, and we'll probably come back in the spring as more monies get received in the year, because again, we can't appropriate the monies until they're available, and, and then what happens is those monies get expended by the health department, they're recorded by our accountant, and then reported to the state annually. So that, that's how the, so that's, but we have to, again, appropriate the monies. Yes?
How are we spending those monies?
Basically, a lot of it is on, on, on treatment resources. We, we, many of you have seen some of the programs, the biggest one is CareSolus, and what it is, is it's basically a, a resource network that provides, a lot of cases, mental health, counseling, services. Also, they have the NACAN distribution boxes, NACAN and so forth, so it really is, and we also have a, basically, a health service worker who goes out and assists people. So it is on those type of activities in the community, and that will continue, the funding distribution, this goes out for the next decade. And, and also, there are additional settlements that are coming along the way, you know, they went with the, they went with the manufacturers, then the distributors, and so forth, so that's, that's going on there. So that, yes, go ahead.
Why do we use the word "graves" if it's been given to us?
Be, oh, it's, it's...
I understand the appropriate, that...
Right. Yeah, but it's, it's, I guess the easiest way is it's legal jargon, they raise and appropriate, free cash, I mean, all these terms are defined by state statute, so. Article 7. No, go ahead. Yes, Dean?
Have you been approached for cannabis or chips?
No, because our zoning prohibits cannabis zoning, but no, we've not been approached. We've not been approached for cannabis, that was the question, is have we been approached regarding cannabis? Article 7. Article 7 is a, a major article for consideration. This has to do with funding from the Community Preservation Fund for the purchase of Coolest Farm, which is off of Pine Hill Road. It's a significant expenditure, as you can see, the appropriation amount is $4,163,900 for 42 acres of land that consists of four parcels, and I'll provide some further detail on that. So basically, as you can see in the slide here, it's four parcels. Coolest Farm was basically, you know, bisected by Interstate 495 when it was constructed, that's why you have parcels on both sides of the highway. The ones on the southern side are essentially wet. The ones of material significance are on the northerly side, and that's the 25.2-acre parcel, which is, which is, we're referring to as Parcel 1, and the six and a half acre, which we call Parcel 2. Historically, it was the Otis Adams Farm, if you go into the town's archives. It's located at 185 Pine Hill Road, if you drive by it there today, you know, that's what you will see, the driveway for the residential dwelling that is on the property, and the marketing sign that was out there. It's 25.2 acres, as I've mentioned. Parcel 2 is across the street, six and a half acres, and it, and on the back of it, you can see in the background, is Interstate 495. So that's, that's Parcel 2. And then, as I mentioned, Parcells 3 and 4, and it's hard to see in this map, but on the bottom of the map, are the green and the blue outlined box on there. Those are, those are 3.55 acres and 6.66 acres. 3.55 has no frontage, it's essentially wet, it, you know, and therefore, a little value. The, I don't know if my pointer works, we'll see if that works. The 4, 6.66 acre parcel does have wetlands through it, but it is dry up in this area, and if you were to go out hunt road here, you'll see this commercial property right by the highway. So it does have some value out at that location. Whoops. Let me go back. How did this come about? Why is it here at town meeting? A year ago, our community development director, Evan Bolansky, was contacted by a real estate broker from Colliers International, and he was accompanied by a court-appointed petition commissioner regarding the state, the sale of the Coolest Farm parcels. This is obviously an estate matter, which is why you've got a court-appointed petition commissioner in that matter. The town doesn't have a right of first refusal, so it wasn't always under tax-protected or tax-sheltered chapter lands, as we call them, which is forestry, agricultural, or recreational property, where property owners receive a discount in their property tax in, in exchange for a, you know, the preservation of that property, but also, when they wish to transact that property, the town has a right of first refusal. That's not the case here. And, and basically, the goal here from the estate was to sell the property and maximize the financial return. The sellers produced a concept plan that showed 21 house lots on the 22.5 acre parcel, which, which we, the street address is 185 Pine Hill Road. And then the other side of the street, as I mentioned, which the other value is, it's six and a half acres, but it has frontage, so basically, you could put the house lots right, right along the roadway without any subdivision or other approval, because it has the necessary frontage under our zoning bylaw. When we learned about this, I reached out to the then-chair of the Conservation Commission and basically said, hey, you know, would this property have conservation value? It's one of the few remaining large parcels in town, and he responded that, yeah, it does, it would be of value. So we were notified that a call for offers, meaning basically sealed proposals, were due on May 3rd. I reached out to the Community Preservation Committee, obtained their consent to obtain an appraisal upon the property, to, to provide the town with the opportunity to see if they wanted to preserve this land as open space land. The Community Preservation Committee unanimously supported it, we hired Minuteman Appraisals to conduct the appraisal, they were the same company that helped us and provided the appraisal on the Warren Polk property most recently, and we, we sent the, we sent the appraiser to work. The call for offers, you know, which again, was basically almost like a request for proposals, included a 21-lot subdivision plan by Beals Associates, basically an engineering firm, conceptual plan. We obviously have in-house engineers and, you know, zoning experts, you know, our community development director, building commissioner, and we worked with, with them, those resources, and the appraiser, and said, you know what, I don't think that you could get 21 house lots out of that, it's probably more accurately 18 house lots. So when the appraiser did his, did his work, he developed an appraisal on 18 house lots, and, and obviously, that's significant, you'll see as we, you come to what the, the acquisition price is. The town submitted its proposal in May, and then several weeks later, we were notified that they wanted to engage the town, so we signed with the Assistance of Council Purchase and Sale Agreement, which allows us the time to bring it to you this evening, or Monday evening, for consideration. There's the cover sheet of the appraisal report, you can see the date of the appraisal, you can't see, but I'll tell you, the date of the appraisal was April 1st, 2022. In the report includes the conceptual 23-lot, you know, subdivision plan from the issuance engineer, Beals Associates. To sort of bring it to summary, based upon the 18-lot subdivision approval, the appraisal report found that the gross value of a house lot in that neighborhood in Chelmsford, based upon the market, is $315,000. So you do the math, 315 times 18, you get to the 5.671 million. You then, obviously, you gotta say, well, wait a minute, you're not gonna sell the lot for that price, because you've got to incur a cost to sell the property and to build the subdivision, the roadway being the most notable cost, as well as the engineering, you know, septic and so forth. The estimate from the appraiser was those costs would be over $3 million, which then result in the fair valuation of the property at 2.55 million for the 25-acre parcel. Across the street, it's a little bit easier, as I said, it, it allows for five approval-not-required lots along the frontage of the roadway, because it is dry by the roadway, and so our zoning, you could, you could basically go, it's approval-not-required, meaning it doesn't require a subdivision approval, you basically go in, submit a plan to the planning board, and they basically have to approve it, because it meets your zoning. The, because they were backed up by the highway, the, the value for, for those parcels is slightly less, and they believe in the market conditions, those, those lots would sell for $300,000. But again, even with $300,000 gross value, you still have to incur costs of sales, marketing, engineering, legal, and so forth, which, which the appraiser estimated, given the time it would take to sell that and so forth, was about $140,000. So the valuation for that parcel B was 1.36 million, and those are the bulk of the value of the 4.1 million that's requested. As I mentioned, the, the two parcels across the street, one's assessed at $31,000, and the other one's at $173,000. So then the question becomes, well, where would we go? What would we do with the property? And very similar to what we did with, when we purchased the Warren Polk property, we would form a resident committee to get community input in terms of how we did develop a plan for the use of the property. And that, that could be a variety of potential uses, but we want to hear from people, and we honestly haven't had the time to develop a plan, because we've been working towards getting the property secured and presented to you at town meeting, and again, we want community input, much like we did with Warren Polk, and, and we think the uses may vary. We, we think for the large parcel, that would probably be open space purposes, trails and so forth. You also could have community gardens, there's been some interest by Weston Nurseries, but whether they'd be interested in leasing a portion of the land, the town does lease land that it acquires for agricultural purposes, similar to what we do at Sheen Farm, which is just down the street from this. So that's what's being considered. Again, this is one of the few remaining large undeveloped parcels in town. The funding would come from the existing surcharge under the Community Preservation Fund, and we would borrow it and pay for it over 15 years. It also, most importantly, would still leave us with the capacity to take on future community preservation needs that may arise, whether they be historical, further open space, and/or community housing needs. So that's, that's the, that's the opportunity that's being presented to the town at this town meeting, so I'll take questions. Yes, Helen?
I've got about 20 of them, but the first...
Sure, go ahead. Start with the first one.
The first one is, why isn't this piece of property being only purchased for the part that can be, meaning, or what, let me state, why isn't this piece of property being zoned for the MBTA to help us as a town?
Well, it, it could be. I mean, the question was, why, why is, why are we not rezoning this property under MBTA zoning? Well, one is, the MBTA zoning process is currently ongoing, right? The planning board is meeting tonight, they've had meetings in the past, they'll have meetings in the months ahead. It is possible that they could choose to zone this for MBTA housing. I don't know. I mean, that would be up to the community to decide, because when the MBTA zoning process is culminated, it will come to the floor of the, of town meeting here, and you will decide what parcels of land are zoned for MBTA zoning. What I can say is, it, and again, this can be a further discussion, if that's what the town wants to do, but if that's what the town wants to do, the first thing you gotta do is you, you would need to acquire this property. Right?
No, you don't, because other people have bought other... You don't, because other people have bought other properties that are considering for MBTA, and they're not owned by the town. So why would we spend $4 million to buy this property when we didn't even think about buying the UMass property for $4 million and putting all our seniors there? I mean, that town, that whole thing went under NIMCA with all these dots to go ahead, and then it-
Again, we're not here to debate.
I know, I know, but it's a question, you're asking me to vote yes on $4 million.
No, no, I'm asking you to consider the request. I'm not asking you to vote yes or no. My job as town manager is to bring opportunities and consideration to the community. If you vote yes, that's fine. If you vote no, that's fine. I don't get a commission whether the town purchases the property or not. So please, don't, please don't characterize that I have an interest in whether you-
I think that you, as Paul Cohen, I'm talking about the town, you are the town.
Right, yeah, the town has the opportunity to bring it for you for consideration. What I, what I can tell you is, something is going to happen here on this property. And that's what you, as the town, have to decide. Because if the town doesn't buy it for open space, we know, and I think what you're suggesting is, it's going to be housing, okay?
But that's what you need to make.
And if that's what this town needs, that's fine, then that's the choice that you make. And that's the choice we made with Warren Pole, because there was a housing plan for Warren Pole off of Bartlett Street, and that could happen there. So I'm not telling you what you can or cannot do, but what I can tell you is, my job is to bring you the information and opportunity. What I believe is that this will be developed into housing, and then the question that you have to decide is, is that what you want the opportunity to be? If the answer is, whatever you decide is the right answer. But recognize that there are implications and consequences of what you decide. Because if it is housing, you're risked. It's going to bring tax revenue to the town on the sale of the, of the, of the development of the property. But it's also going to, it'll probably, and we can calculate what the taxes are gonna be on a million-dollar house. Just, it's probably $17,000 a year per house lot. That's fine. But you've also gotta know that if it's four-bedroom, million-dollar houses, there's gonna be people living in those houses who are gonna utilize town services, namely, your educational services. And you've gotta decide, you know, what is that impact? Because what is the impact going to be for this community? Now, I will speak as town manager personally. What is the impact going to be on our schools in terms of space? If you build the units and the children that are gonna come to the West Campus, and now you put another 823, four-bedroom units there, and then we're gonna get the migrants coming in from, from the, you know, the state, what's that going to do to our school system in terms of space? I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but if you're asking me to provide you with the full scope of information, that's, and you've gotta decide what the right answer is.
What about sewers?
What's that?
If they build on these, what about sewage for all these homes?
There'll be no sewage, that's why I used the word septic system. They would have to go out and build septic systems out on this property because we do not have the sewer capacity. As you're familiar with, at the US West Campus, they put an onsite package treatment plant for their sewer needs. I suppose that somebody could do that here. I think what they can't do is they can't bring a 40B here because we believe we're at a threshold of 10% under the guidelines. But you're right, under MBTA zoning or by straight subdivision approval, they could, they could put in, the subdivision allows, as you can say, a minimum of 24, 23 house lots, you know, four-bedroom, single-family homes. That's fine, and if that's what the town decides it wants to do, that's what it wants to do. Any other questions, Helen? Because you said you had a lot. Okay, all right, yes, you, yes, Tom.
When we build a school on that site?
You've got wetlands.
You've got a little bit of wetlands there. I think the other question is about building a school is, would you want to build a school that remote in that area? Because when, right now, why I say that is, the plans in recent years were to build a new high school. That didn't happen. Now they're looking at a new middle school, which would serve the whole town. I don't think you'd want to construct those type of schools over here on Pine Hill Road because, because of the access issues in terms of, you're gonna have, if you did that, you'd have to do some major improvements to the roadways. And I also, it's not centrally located. I expect that in the future, when the town builds additional new schools, it'll probably be at the existing campus that's boarded by McCarthy, Parker, and the existing high school. Yes?
How much revenue does the town get from the property current tax rate?
Oh, it's, it's very little. The property right now is, all those four parcels are assessed at roughly $1.3 million. So it's, and it's because it's not subdivided. No, it's because it's not subdivided. Once you subdivide the properties, then the assessment goes up because you're carving individual housing, housing lots. So right now, you're probably getting about 20, maybe 23, $25,000 of tax revenue.
Is this a proposal of the open space?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes.
How is the land zoned?
How is the land zoned? It's zoned residential. Yeah, there's no zoning request, yes.
If the lands are developed, you sequester this carbon. So is there any data that'll be provided, or if it gets developed, how much carbon emissions would be added to the town's?
We don't have that capability of doing that, Tom. I appreciate your, your interest, I don't have that information, that I can't provide the carbon impact on a residential subdivision, I just, I just don't have that information. I think it will add, of course, it certainly would add, but I just don't have that information available. And I certainly won't have it by next week.
Could we buy parcel A and not B?
No, it's a comprehensive package, it was packaged of one sale. We can't sort of pick and choose which, you know, which parcels that we wanted.
And that was discussed? Because it seems like it would be easier for someone to develop and cheaper on parcel B, and we want parcel A anyway, probably.
No, I mean, if the town wanted to, at a future time, you could, you could seek to sell parcel B, if that's what the town wanted to do. And, you know, but, but no, it was, it's an all-inclusive offer, and that's how it was marketed. And that's how it would be, no, we can't pick and choose. As I mentioned, we have been approached by Weston Nurseries because they are located two parcels down, if you're familiar with that part of Pine Hill Road. And they, they need expansion space for their growing stock and so forth. Therefore, the town could do is, we could issue a lease proposal and then bring in revenue, you know, from the sale of the lease of that land to the community. And I think that would have some material value. But that would be a competitive process. Again, that's what we do for Sheehan Farm, you know, we lease that out for agricultural purposes. So that's, that's not unheard of as a possibility, yes.
Can you summarize what the article really is? You're asking for funds from the Conservation?
Community Preservation Fund.
And, but that wouldn't fund the whole thing, you could take out a loan?
Yeah, no, basically it is, the whole amount is borrowed, and then the debt service is paid off over the next 15 years from that surcharge fund, which is already in existence. So we're not looking to raise the amount of the surcharge. The existing surcharge that's in place would remain intact, and that's how it would be paid over the next 15-year period. Yes?
Quick question, why wouldn't you have considered this as, even though it's one big parcel lot, but if unwinding it at a later stage is parcel B, A, C, D, whatever it is, why would you not have brought four different articles, but at the-
Because we can't buy, we can't pick and choose. It's not a, it's not a buffet of parcels, it's one-
Okay.
One purchase.
Thank you.
One last question. On the parcel A and B, when we purchase it, is there a vote on, are we buying it? Or can we say, we're buying it and we deem it conservation land right now? Or is that always gonna be two votes, buy it then decide what to do with it?
You could, you could, you could, somebody can, you can-
Could we lock that in?
You could do that, an emotion could be made on the floor at town meeting to, because right now, it says for open space purposes. It would be within the scope of the article if somebody said, let's amend the word "open space" to "conservation," that would be permissible. The reason I put it as "open space," and it was the exact same language that I used when I prepared the warrant and presented for Warren Pole, is I didn't want to be presumptuous to speak on behalf of the town. And the way that was done is, it was purchased for open space, and then the decision was made subsequent to work with the Conservation Commission because the property does have to have a preservation restriction put on it. And right now, we're, the, that process is nearing completion to put a restriction on the property that would hold it for conservation purposes. So yes, but if you wanted to expedite that and lock that in, that could be done at town meeting on, you know, when it's considered. That would be an amendment, and then the town would decide if they wanted to adopt that amendment. And if they did, then that would become the part of the main motion, and then the town would decide, you know, on that action. So yes, that's, that's permissible. Again, the, the window was, and was for, was to see, does the town want to do that? And similar to what we did with Warren Pole, we then took the subsequent step. But if, if people say, no, we want it, and we want to lock it in for conservation, then, then that's permissible on Monday evening at town meeting. There any, yes, yes, Helen, you've got another question?
So if they free-buy it, and they lock it in as conservation, can they turn around, can the planning board turn around and put parcels of that under the MBTA zoning, and if so, then that does, it cannot go?
No, in essence, in essence, you wouldn't be fulfilling, you wouldn't be fulfilling the requirements of the MBTA housing. Because, I mean, that'd be like, we could take our other pieces of conservation land and tax them. You can't do that. And the reason is, is that's not the intent of where the state's going. And even though we can only say, well, at this point, under state law, you're only required to do the zoning, let's, let's be realistic and see where this is going. It's not going to, I believe, I believe now, it's not going to end at zoning. The next phase will be construction or penalties for non-construction. But under, but you would not get approval, I think the state would reject MBTA zoning proposals that were basically town conservation land. Nancy's, Nancy, I think Nancy's nodding her head that it wouldn't meet, Nancy's been involved with it tangentially as a former planning board member.
I understand that under the state, state reds, once you put it into conservation, you can't get it back out.
Right, well, you'd have to-
That means if the town needs it for some other purpose, they can't.
Well, you'd have to replicate it, you'd have to replicate it, one-for-one replacement, right, right, but anyway. Go ahead, Mary.
If they do, you know, talking about putting my property into MBTA where I live, and that's exactly my fear now that I'm dead and after I walked away that night, is that they can come in and take, and domain it, and change our whole complex.
Well, they can change the zoning, I don't know who's gonna-
They change the zoning, the state can come in later on down the road and take all of their property. That's what I'm finding out.
Well, I, again, this isn't an MBTA article, but I'm not aware how the state could do that because they have to compensate you.
Even under eminent domain, because that's what I've been told. They have to be able to take land for eminent domain, and they have to show that that specific land has to be used for some public purpose in order to take it.
And they have to compensate, they have to compensate people too, you can't just take-
Right, and I understand that, but it just doesn't, it doesn't apply.
Yes?
Could the parcel also be used for recreation purposes?
Yes, it could. I mean, that, you know, it could be used for active recreation. For example, the parcel that's by the highway side, the small, that is relatively flat, and the wetlands aren't till the rear of the property. So one of the other considerations is, is it could be used for active recreation. We, you know, we've had demands and needs for pickleball courts, for additional playfields. That is one consideration that could be. But yes, the short answer to your question is, is yes, that could be a consideration by the town. Yes?
Explain the difference between a restriction for open space land, like the toilet, and conservation restriction? Is open space more, more options like the recreation?
Yeah, conservation restrictions generally don't provide for active recreation. No, it's playing field.
It just has to be left as is.
Yeah, conservation-
In open space, you have a few more options. But either way, it would be a permanent.
Right, and it could be different, they could, the town could decide to put different restrictions on different parcels. And that was sort of the question that was suggested earlier. You could take the, you know, let me go back to the, to the map. So you've got, you've got four parcels, so on one side of Pine Hill Road, the large parcel, parcel one, that could be used for, for conservation purposes, walking trails, there is, there is wetlands. I know members of the Conservation Commission have gone out there and looked to see if there's vernal pools on the site. That could be, you know, what we do know is, it was, it was under an agricultural use in years past, and there's a lot of overgrowth and so forth on there. But then you could take another parcel, such as parcel two, on the other side of the street, the 6 and 1/2 acre parcel, and there could be a different restriction on that property, which may allow for active recreation or agricultural or what have you. I mean, you, you know, agricultural generally is allowable anywhere. But you could use one for conservation, you know, what you call passive recreation. And then you could use the other one for active recreation. And again, because, you can see the complexity, which is why we said, very similar to what we did with Warren Pole, is we, let's get public input, let's have public meetings, let the town decide, you know, how that property could best be used. And then, and then most of those would come back here because if you're gonna use it for active recreation, you're gonna need town meeting funding to, you know, to construct, whether it's pickleball courts, soccer field, what have you. So that would come back to town meeting if that were to recur. Are there any, yes, go ahead.
Has all that land been checked for hazardous waste or anything? Could we get stuck with some big bill, cleaning up stuff?
We're, I mean, we haven't done 20, we haven't done what you'd call a 21E environmental testing out there. We're not aware of any hazardous waste issues, there's none on record. Very similar to Warren Pole property, you know, it's agricultural-
Will the town do that, 21E, and do the check to make sure we don't get stuck?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that as a, as a condition of closing. You know, it would be relatively expensive to do that for a parcel of this size.
Yeah, but like, how expensive?
I don't know the number.
I mean, are you talking $100,000, you're talking?
I don't know, I don't want to, I don't want to hazard a guess because, again, you're talking 40 acres of land. Again, I think the best guide is how it's been used historically. Again, with agricultural purposes. There are no, there are, there are neighborhoods in the area that we're not aware of anything. I mean, Thomas Drive comes up to the backside of the property. You know, you've got Pine Hill Road, you know, we've had no, we've encountered no issues with Sheehan Farm. So I, I just, I guess a short answer is, no, I don't see the risk. And I don't know that, you know, that that would be an exhaustive and perhaps expensive effort to do a full 21E out there. And we, and we didn't do that action when we, when we acquired Sunny Meadow Farm or, you know, or other similar properties. So if there's no further questions, that brings us to Article 8, and with Article, go ahead.
Is the valuation going to be available for public view?
Yeah, yeah, I have the appraisal report, if you, if you want, contact me, and, yeah, it's a public document. It's available, yeah, if you'd like to obtain it. Article 8 is sort of what I mentioned earlier. That is to request $50,000 in order to prepare a community use of the property. And obviously, we're not going to do Article 8 if Article 7 doesn't pass. But in the event that the town decides to move forward, the request under Article 8 is to request $50,000 in order for the town to conduct, you know, the assessments on what it wishes to do with the property, as well as to, you know, prepare the property for those types of initial uses moving forward. So that's, that's what the request is under Article 8. So again, I think that's pretty easily understandable. Article 9 is a second in minor land acquisition. This is a 1.15 acre parcel that's located adjacent to the Cranberry Bog. I know it's hard to see on the map, and I'll pull it up, but to give you the sense, there's Hard Pond on the, on the map and on your handout. And then to the, to the right of it is the Cranberry Bog, and it goes to the bottom of the photo there. The dot that you see there is sort of the small acre parcel, 1.15 acres. It immediately abuts existing conservation land, which is why we're bringing it for your consideration. The, there's a little bit of a bigger issue, and it would allow for access to the Cranberry Bog area from Elm Street. Adjacent to it are two parcels that are owned by the Chelmsford Water District. And so that, this would then, you know, then connect and expand the wildlife corridor. The acquisition price is based on the assessed value. It's very similar to the one that was completed at town meeting last spring for Stony Brook. The idea by the, by the community and, you know, it's supported by the Conservation Commission is to expand existing wildlife corridors. Article 10 is a request for- Article 10 is a request for funding to renovate the high school kitchen. It's a, it's a request for an appropriation of $1.5 million. This would be borrowed in, 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 you know, given the magnitude of the project. The, going back in FY '24 capital, we, we appropriated additional $641,000 for this project. We've worked with the designer to develop design, detailed design documents for this project. The goal would be to perform this work next summer when school's out of session so that it could be ready for the fall. The current cost estimate of 2.1 million total falls in line with the construction costs of the market that's out there. The, you know, the reasons for the total cost and the escalation is just the, you know, what's happening out there in, in the industry trying to reflect what today's bidding market. It's also a total gut of, of the kitchen, which wasn't originally envisioned back years ago when the product was added to the capital list. It's, it's basically, you're doing everything from total new flooring, reconfiguring the whole entire kitchen layout, and renovating ancillary space and all the accompanying HVAC, electrical and plumbing, including a grease trap on that work. Because it is a major project, we have to engage a, own as project manager on this project. And so the goal is very similar to the work that we've completed at Parker School and, and in the last days of completion at the McCarthy School. The goal is to renovate the kitchen at the high school because we, that high school is going to be utilized for the foreseeable future at this point in time. And the work needs to be, needs to be done.
So at that school, do they serve meals?
Yes, yeah, right, right now, under, under, and the, they actually prepare and serve live meals at the high school and the two middle schools. And then they transport those meals from those sites to the elementary schools. So they are active kitchens, it's, you know, at those locations. Yes, Bodri.
What's the approximate lifetime production for all of this equipment that's going, not the flooring and stuff, but the lifetime equipment?
I would expect that it would last at least 20 years.
20 years?
That's probably what, what I would anticipate.
And therefore, if, if a new middle school or something happens in the 15 years, we would be able to reuse or leverage this if needed, if it was moving?
Well, there's no, there's no plan to abandon the high school at any point in time in the next 20 years.
Something. If, if this high school becomes the new middle school or something. Okay.
The next article, Article 11, is a request to transfer $1.5 million from free cash for roadway and sidewalk construction. You've heard this story at, at town meeting both spring and fall about roadway funding. As you can see in your packet, you see on the slides, you know, unfortunately, the state has level funded for the last 11 years, the amount of money that it provides to cities and towns for road construction, which comes from the gas tax. And the reason for that is because the state hasn't changed the gasoline tax in, in over a half dozen years. We receive 1.157 million annually in what's called Chapter 90 funding from the state. We also put in additional half million dollars at our annual capital budget. And we'll also, I'm sorry, 750 under the capital budget. We also get, we anticipate, although we haven't received formal notice, that under the new millionaire's tax or the fair share amendment to state, that we'll receive additional half million dollars in road construction and maintenance funding. However, when you add all this up, you know, the funding is, is only about a third of what's needed to maintain our roads and sidewalk infrastructure. Again, adding the million and a half this year would, would again further accelerate our, our investments out in our roadways and sidewalks. What we, what we produce and we have, and there's an excerpt from it, is annually, the Public Works Director revisits our sidewalk and road condition and, and updates the five-year paving plan. This is where it currently sits if you go to our website, in terms of the paving projects that are on the list for, for 2024 and 2025. And so again, this would help eliminate the backlog. We've done a lot of work this, this past year. And, and you're seeing it literally outside this building as you come tonight, some of the investments in, in roadway and sidewalk improvements. And again, this would again help meet that need. So that's the request under this article. Yes, go ahead.
Is this, how does this compare to previous years?
We put an A and a half a year ago as well.
Okay.
Article 12. Go ahead, oh, sorry, yes, Bodri.
Sorry, previous one? I'm assuming this, obviously DPW has reviewed it, but has public input gone into the selection of this list?
We, we put the list out to the public and if people have comments and concerns, they're welcome to provide comments and concerns to that. But no, the, the DPW doesn't hold a public input session on what roads it would pave because-
But the sidewalk construction?
Oh, the sidewalk construction, we have a public sidewalk plan. We've, I think it was explained at spring town meeting and, and our Public Works Director can explain it on, when this is considered as well, is our focus continues to be to maintain what we have, to make sure our current sidewalks are fully accessible. And then you have, and the third priority is, is focusing on school areas, school zone areas in terms of pavement improvements. We, we can't see literally beyond that. I mean, and the other part that what happens is, when we do do some of the road paving and the ancillary sidewalk work, that's the time to get it done. So when they're out there doing repaving on Parkers Road, there's a small area of Parkers Road where there's no sidewalk, well, then they'll add that missing gap when that occurs. So that's, that's usually the accompaniment part. But, you know, the, the, the other challenge that we have with sidewalks is, is every time we add sidewalks, that means the town has to go out and not only maintain additional sidewalks, but we have to do snow and ice removal in a timely manner and other aspects on those sidewalks. But at this point in time, we've, our Public Works Director has presented to the school committee, she's presented to the select board. And we welcome input on roadway and sidewalk improvements, but at this point, that's where things stand. And as I said, what will happen is prior to next spring, which is the upcoming construction season, she'll return to the select board with a revised roadway and sidewalk construction plan. Article 12 is funding for $100,000 for, to address sewer infiltration and inflow. And we've had a lot of sewer infiltration and inflow as a result of the weather conditions we've had this past year. The, the town has conducted and our Public Works Director and the consulting engineers have reported to the select board, you know, the improvements that could enhance our sewer capacity by addressing inflow and infiltration. Inflow and infiltration obviously, you know, replaces capacity that would otherwise would be available for, for communities' use. The difference between inflow and infiltration, inflow is when you, when you divert water mostly into the sewer system, liquid into the sewer system from like sump pumps, roof leaders and so forth. Infiltration is if you have cracked pipes, you know, manhole issues and so forth. But this funding would provide the, the design and bidding costs for the, the rehabilitation of torn at manholes that have, have, were been identified as the ability to provide some, you know, recovery. As I noted earlier, we, we do track our sewer flow and we look how it compares over time. And we also measure it to rainfall, which is the source of it. And this is a graph that the Public Works Director assembled that sort of shows you, you know, the stark difference from this, this summer, which is the data on the far right where it's been very wet under, you know, July and August, September versus if you go to the far left, you can look at last July, August and September, and you can see that, you know, that the source of this is clearly inflow and infiltration. You know, you don't, you don't achieve 40% increases in sewer flow in one year period naturally. So that's the request under this is to, again, begin doing the design work to, to address some manholes for recovery. Because as you can see, we are at our sewer capacity limit, which is what that solid bar is on the top of the chart. Article 13 is funding for PFAS remediation. This is again a recurring request to the town. This year, the, the amount of the appropriation increased to $425,000 to remediate the PFAS in the soil and groundwater that's at the highway yard at 54 Richardson Road. I think many of you are familiar with what PFAS is. It's, it's, you know, the, the everywhere chemical. It was detected two years ago at the Richardson Road site. It, it came from the operations of the highway yard, you know, back at that location decades ago. And the, the concern is, obviously, it's close proximity to the North Chelmsford Water District wells. This project is being overseen by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. So how it works, as we've explained in the past, is the town pumps groundwater, underground water, treats it and then reinjects it back into the groundwater to remove the PFAS. And this is the cost estimate provided by our consulting engineers to perform the work for the year ahead. And as you note at the very bottom, this year's amount went up by $175,000 because of one-time work that has to be done on the system for, for this project. So that's what's taking place under this article. And we do get, the select board does get quarterly reports of the results of the treatment system. And as expected, it has worked favorably, but we're not below the current environmental thresholds. And then there's a likelihood of the environmental threshold to be lowered in, in the next six months or so by the federal government. Yes?
How are we doing?
We're doing fine. It's, it's, there's been a noticeable decline in the PFAS levels. The, the operation system's only been running for about 15 months, so we've got a ways to go. The question is, is will it and when will it plateau? And then what are the challenges that you have once you plateaued? It's, it's like any other cleanup. You can, you usually get a very big reduction initially, and then the question is, is how do you then mitigate? Because you're talking about parts per trillion in the water supply, which people equate to drops in a swimming, you know, Olympic-sized swimming pool of contaminants. Article 14 is a straightforward request for masonry repair at the Adams Public Library. This case, it's $70,000 to complete the work at the Adams Library. This is to rebuild the north chimney and the front stairs at the Adams Public Library. Again, reflecting the bidding aspects of the market. And also to change the stairs to a granite-based stairs to avoid this constant repeating of the breakdown of the concrete stairs. So the goal is to bid it this fall and winter and do the work this coming summer. And so that just provides you with a level of scope of the project, but, yes, Tom? No, no, you've gone by the wall, that's essentially completed. What has to happen out there right now is there's some landscaping that has to take place, and they're going to put a wooden guardrail up in the parking lot. So no, this is for the stairs of the library and the chimney. Well, what we end up doing is we remove the sidewalk, Tom, because it was a sidewalk to nowhere. It literally did, yeah, so it literally, but right now, there's no longer a sidewalk in that area. So there's no longer an accessibility issue because there's no longer a sidewalk, because it really literally went nowhere. We now have the flashing, you know, LED crosswalk to get across the roadway to the plaza, so it goes that way. That was previously appropriated by town meeting.
So it didn't just fall by itself?
I mean- No, and if you recall the, the history of it, the library, the library had the request in to rebuild the wall because the library's now at that point in its life. And also, there's, there's going to be a future request to repave the parking lot. So that's what's coming next. And then the next thing that's going to happen in the library, you're going to have to redo the HVAC system because the library's at that stage of its life. So this was sort of the phase one, which is deal with the retaining wall. And then unfortunately related to that, there was a car accident where a car drove off the wall and then damaged it physically, but all along, it was going to be replaced. And then similarly, for the McKay Library, there's a $30,000 request for masonry work at McKay. And that's to replace the front stairs and walkway, refinish the wrought iron rails and improve accessibility to the rear entrance at McKay. And again, it, it involves demolition of the existing steps and walkway. And again, installing replacement, you know, the related looming and seating. And then more importantly, in addition is the rear entrance is to really improve the aid to, to meet the current ADA codes for the rear entrance. Right now, it's an existing wooden ramp and railings that, that need to be replaced because of their condition, but they also don't technically meet the, the new standards because you now have a better grade that's required, meaning a lower grade, which means a longer ramp that has to be replaced with. And they'll also add one of the accessibility push buttons for the door at the rear entrance to the McKay Library. So that's the request under that article. Article 16. And I should say, normally I'm joined by others for the presentation. My, my finance director is also on the planning board. And tonight, the planning board is meeting, and it was a meeting that, that John Souza didn't want to, didn't want to miss. So, so sort of apologize for being sort of a monotone, you know, independent speaker. But I promise you, before this night gets over, you'll, you'll hear from a couple of the speakers on particular articles. Because I, I think they can more effectively present the article. So I'm going to ask Bodri to come up and present later, and I'm going to ask Nancy Arroway, if she would, to discuss her article on the zoning matter. So, so you, you will get to hear others later this evening. Article 16 is a strategic plan. The town is requesting $125,000 for the development of a community-based vision and strategic plan. And this would be the town's first strategic plan, but we won't be the first town to conduct a strategic plan. And really, what, what's being requested and what's, what is desirable and supported by the select board is, we really need to develop a plan for the future that has a clear vision of where we want to go and, and where we want to invest our resources. And a way to achieve that, and we've seen other towns do it, and it's going on currently in Westford, they've already funded it, you'll see those numbers later, and a number of other communities, and you'll see a list later, is basically you do a year-long process where you sort of look upon the resources and work that's been done ahead of us and then get, and then present to the community, get the community's input, and then develop a plan with, with measurable strategic goals going, going forward to the future. So again, it's really the community's plan on how we, how we're going to go forward. And then the only, the only value and the, and the only way to have it meeting is you have to have specific goals, how you're going to allocate your limited resources and, and be able to implement it and track it going forward. And the question is why, well, who's going to do this work? Quite frankly, the way this is done and the, and we've seen it done, and we've even seen it done in a, in, in a smaller scale in our community, the schools developed a strategic plan, they brought in a consultant, had input sessions and developed with the school committee a strategic plan for the public schools. As you know, the, the, the planning board developed a master plan, brought in a consultant from NIMCOG most recently, and had input sessions and, and developed a master plan for, for, for the community as required by state statute. So what we envision in this scenario is, let's bring in the stakeholders of these groups. Let's bring a comprehensive strategic plan. And so bringing in together and sort of that, that steering committee would be the town manager, the select board reps, school committee, planning board, Conservation Commission, the age-friendly Chelmsford Committee, Housing Advisory Committee, as well as other boards and committees. And, and, and what, and what the purpose of this is, and, and you see listed out there, we have a number of plans, as I mentioned earlier, the school improvement plan, the planning board's master plan, we have an open space recreation plan, housing production plan. But the problem is with these plans is you don't address the conflicts and come forward with where are we going? How do we use those resources? So on the one hand, you hear requests- So on the one hand, you hear requests, well, we want to maintain the town's character. But on the other hand, we say, well, we'd like to expand our sewer capacity. One hand, you say, we want to construct a new school building. And then the other concerns are, but wait a minute, can't you control the increase in our property taxes? One hand, you say, we want to provide additional housing, but then we hear concerns from residents about, well, we don't want to avoid density. We don't, we don't want to be the next Arlington, or, you know, if that's what we wanted, we would have moved there. And then we want to expand our commercial tax base, then we get concerns from citizens and others saying, well, can't you do something about the traffic congestion in the community? And so again, the goal is, develop a specific strategic plan that, yes, it's a living document, it will be modified over time, developed. And so we looked out, and the select board has worked on this for the last several months, and they directed me to issue an expression of interest to see, well, what firms are out there and what might it cost? And we had a response from eight companies who do strategic plans, both in Massachusetts as well as in the country. And the price range ranged from a low of $40,000, which I think realistically wouldn't have cut it, to a high of $145,000. And then we looked at what other communities had expended on their master plans, and you see listed there, Shrewsbury spent $85,000 back in 2021, Westford appropriated a couple of months ago, $95,000 for a strategic plan. And then we even see in the town of Wellesley, which, you know, has greater resources, they expended $150,000 back in 2019, and then they're budgeting already $200,000 in their financial planning to revise it in 2026. So again, the components of it are community input and visioning, developing the plan in terms of strategic planning sessions, you know, clear drafts of goals, policy statements, a workable planning document, and then forming an implementation committee that would provide ongoing strategic initiatives with strategic action items, identify who are the responsible parties to get the work done, and then refine the plan over time. Again, we don't have the in-house capability to do this, nor do, you know, nor do we see other communities do it in-house. And so the idea would be, again, put out a proposal for a consultant, and the idea is you need an unbiased facilitator, you know, to not only to lead the sessions, but also gather the information from the planning documents that we have, and then synthesize this for the informational and input sessions. And again, you know, that process will leave with a clear, articulate set of goals, action steps, and policy statements that are specific and measurable over time. And as I said at the outset, there are other communities that have done this in addition to the ones I've mentioned on, in terms of the financing, and you can see it covers from, you know, from Provincetown in the Cape to Westboro to other places in between. And then at the end of the result, you do get a planning document, and here's an example, and I know you can't read it, but it's, it's just to show you, you know, a specific example from Shrewsbury on their strategic plan. And then you see a different one from Wellesley, you know, which, again, identifies strategies, you know, actions, when they're going to be done, who's going to do them, is this a high priority, has it been programmed? And so that's what we're seeking to do, is we're seeking your funding to partake in this year-long effort, and then report back to the community, and then implement it. Because I think as we've seen, even some of our discussions tonight, we can't do all things, and I think the alternative is, is to do a hit-and-miss approach. You know, well, do we go and pursue connection to the MWA and sewer? But does the community want that growth and so forth? And so this here is, again, is a, is a input-driven process that would hopefully provide a direction that, you know, will lead us, and the challenges that are ahead, and we know there are real challenges ahead, both financially and resource-wise, in terms of where do we want to go? And we've heard some of that tonight. Well, you've got the MBTA zoning issues, you've got school issues, you, you know, and so forth. And so that's what this process is meant to do. So at this point, I'll pause and see if there's any questions that people have. Yes?
Do I understand this correctly, that you're planning that they, there would be a consultant hired, would work with a new committee, a steering committee, and then that would then take input from all the other, your groups?
And the public. No, there'd be public sessions. Yeah, you probably have sessions in this room where you'd hear from the public, yes.
And then from that, that would be what we come?
Right, so they'd come back with a draft plan, and then get feedback from that, and then come up with the final plan, yes.
So, and so the $125,000 would be, 99% of that would be going to the consultant?
Yeah, basically, yeah, basically, that's what it consists of, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, how do you pick the consultant?
What's that?
Who picks the consultant?
I would think, I would think it would be the Strategic Planning Committee. I think the, I envisioned that, and again, this would be discussed at select board meetings if it's funded. I think that the first step would be to form the committee, then have the committee work with, you know, with the drafting of the NRP, have the committee come back to the select board with his recommendation, because an ad hoc committee doesn't have independent authority in terms of expending money and so forth. But they would, you know, this would be under the guise of the select board, but I think the select board would look to the committee in terms of, okay, this is who we've chosen, this is how we've chosen it, you know, give the approval and move forward. Yeah. All right. All right, we'll now move on to Article 17, which is free cash to the general stabilization fund. This is sort of your clue that the funding articles are, have ended, and basically, what we take is the remaining funds from free cash that were certified as of the close of our fiscal year on June 30th, and then we transfer that, the balance, which, if everything under this warrant were appropriated, would be $947,537 to the stabilization fund. Right now, our balance in the stabilization fund is 13.7 million. Our operating budget right now is 156.5 million, so we're roughly about 8.7%. Our policy is to be between 5 and 10%. And again, with an uncertain future, you know, the idea is, is to hold money in cash reserves. The reason you appropriate it from free cash into the stabilization fund is, the difference is, is they can both be spent for any lawful purpose. The difference is, to get it out of the stabilization fund, you need a two-thirds vote. So it's more of a safeguard. So that's why we just don't leave it as free cash. Yes?
If this fails, what happens to money?
Just sits there. Yeah, just sits there as free cash, yeah, and can be appropriated at a future meeting, but only a majority vote. Article 18 is, I'll call a minor article. This is to establish a public shade tree revolving fund. And we have a number of revolving funds. You recall, we do them at spring town meeting. They have to do with the sale of cruisers and with the equipment, buys equipment for new cruisers. We do a revolving fund for the sealer and weights and measures, and the revenue from in pays for the sealer. Well, here's the same thing. With public shade trees, in the event that shade trees are removed, and most notably, they're removed by utilities, most cases, the idea is for them to provide cash to the town for the replanting of replacement trees. And so that's what's being requested here, is to establish a new public shade tree revolving fund. And, you know, we estimate, on a typical year, it'd be about $30,000 maximum, at $600 a tree is generally the cost to do this type of work, to plant new trees. Again, the reason for the revolving fund, and it goes back to the discussion I had early on in the meeting about, remember with the sewer interest thing, is if we don't have this fund, if National Grid were to write the town a check for a tree replacement, we don't have the legal authority to expend that money until the subsequent fiscal year, when the treasury is balanced out, and it will become free cash in the future. So this is basically to provide the ability to replace trees in a timely manner, and it would restrict the money from the sale of those, you know, from that work to the, to replacement of trees. Yes?
So how, would that be bylaw or something?
No, it's an existing bylaw, and this just adds the shade tree to that bylaw. And then we're required every year to vote the dollar amount of that bylaw. Yeah, exactly. So it's, and it doesn't affect the taxes or anything, it's just, it's just a financial requirement. Now we get into additional community preservation articles. The first one is vault shelving for archive records. It's a request for $26,875 to basically install shelving in the lower town level, lower town hall, town clerk's vault. And the town clerk has prepared these slides, and again, you can read them at your opportunity, but in essence, he's provided the history of funding for archiving and the projects they've completed. You've seen these photos in the past, you know, years in terms of the works and records that sort of began with Honorina Maloney, when she was clerk, and is now being performed by her successor, Patricia Duris. And you can see on the right shows you the, you know, the bound work that's been completed. And this is really what you're buying, is you're buying these rolling, you know, shelving units that, again, provide for efficient use of space in that vault. So that's, that's where the money is going, is to those shelves that would then store records in a climate-controlled area. So, okay. And then Article 20 is a citizen petition article, and this is where I get a break, and I turn the microphone over to Nancy Arroway, who's going to present on behalf of the petitioner, to rezone a portion of Littleton Road. And I'm going to pull Nancy's slides up. Okay. Nancy, you know how to do this, you just use the button that advances it. Okay, all right, if not, if not, worst case, I get, if you run into a problem, but it's this button here on the other side.
The one on the right?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right. So, I am not the petitioner. The petitioner is Mike Smith, the upholsterer on Littleton Road. And he's not exactly as literate of the zoning bylaws as I am, so he asked for my help to do the research, draft this up, and present it. Okay. All right. So this is the map of the properties that are affected by this. The, the request is to change the zoning on the portion of Littleton Road that's closest to the center, from RB to RC zoning. There's 35 residential properties and one commercial property here. And these are all directly on Littleton Road. They go from the forefathers' burying ground and Gingerail Plaza, down to the lime kiln quarry and the wetlands to the, toward Westford. All right. So what this map shows you, the, the part of the map here that's circled in red is the target area. This is the Littleton Road area. The color coding on this map, if you look, does this have a light by any chance?
It does have a label pointer that it would be...
How do I do it? The red one?
The red one, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Cool. Okay, so this area over here is already and has been forever RC zoning. This area is RB zoning, and the Littleton Road area was included in the 1960s in that RC zoning. So if you go, this is the middle of the Chelmsford Center right here. So if you go out toward Town Hall, it's all RC. If you go out Route 4 over here, it's commercial, and then all RC over here. But for some reason, Littleton Road coming out of the center was zoned at RB. If you go up this way on Route 4, it's commercial. So why does it make a difference? So RB zoning, which is what we currently have, is basically a one-acre building lot. The area on Littleton Road was built up back in the 1880s, 1890s, 1910s as in-town lots. These are all small lots. They do not fit RB zone requirements at all. Over 85% of our lots are non-conforming to the zoning, the RB zoning that was assigned to them, and it makes development, redevelopment, and investment in our properties really difficult. Okay. So this slide is just a summary of the different residential zoning districts. So our A zoning is our lowest-density, single-family zoning district. It's, I think it's an acre and a half for a single family. RB, which is a large portion of town, is a one-acre zone for a single family. It also permits two families by special permit on properties, residences that were built before 1938, when the zoning was first put in place, on lots that are not less than 15,000 square feet with a special permit. And that's going to be significant as we go through this. RC zoning, which is what we're trying to move to, and what you saw as in the surrounding areas around the center, are medium-density residential properties that permit two families on a half acre. And then there's our higher-density property zoning, the RM districts, the residential multifamily, that are up eight, eight units per acre by special permit, the UMass West multifamily overlay that's 15 units per acre, and the Seoid and Biod industrial multifamily conversions and constructions that typically permit 20, 20 units and up per acre. So what we're talking about here is moving from residential B to residential C. So those 1938 properties, 1938 and before properties, have the right to convert to two families, and we have a lot of them on Littleton Road. These are the special permit criteria that they have to meet in order to be allowed to convert. There is nothing in this criteria that is odd, abnormal, or presents risks to deny those properties to convert. If you have a four-bedroom, single family, converting it to two, two-bedroom units provides the same number of, of parking spaces and the same amount of sewerage. So it's just, it's a wash. Okay. So the current land use. In terms of ownership, Littleton Road area is currently primarily owner-occupied. Of those 35 properties, plus the commercial property, 27 of them are owner-occupied. Another six of them are owned by people that live on the street. So they own more than one property on the street, and they live there. There's only three properties on the street, and that includes the one commercial property that has the service station on it, that is owned by somebody outside of town and far away. So this, this area is, you know, it's invested in by the people that live there. The age of the houses. 74% of the residences on this street are old enough to be able to convert to two families. Six of those properties already have. Six of those properties already have. The current zoning requires 40,000 square feet. The zoning that we're looking for requires 20,000 square feet. What have I got? I'm on the wrong page here. So we have, the smallest lot is 7,400, the largest is 65,000, but the average lot size in this area is 23,900 square feet, which is right in alignment with the zoning that we are asking for. So the RC zone is 20,000, our average lot size is 23,000. We currently have 16 properties that are under 20, 15 that are over 20 but don't comply with the current zoning requirement of 40,000, and five properties total on the street that actually comply with current zoning. And this gets down to a lot of the issues of why we're asking for this. So depreciation on the properties on this street range from 10% to 66%. Average depreciation is about 30%. If you look at the stats there, 20 of those properties have a depreciation over 45%. I'm sorry, between 30 and 45%. That's pretty darn high in terms of the condition of the properties and the taxes the town doesn't get. So we're looking for the ability to maintain and improve these properties, and the current zoning, which doesn't fit what we are, is getting in the way. I'm sorry, Paul. I don't know why I'm not, I can't get there from here. Okay, so the technical overall impact is that 55% of the properties that are pre-1938 that have not already converted to two families would have the ability to convert to two families with a building permit instead of a special permit from the ZBA. This would allow those properties that were built after 1938 to potentially convert to two families. And it reduces the lot size and setbacks that are required for improvements to properties. So that's the technical side of what does this change do. Now the personal side of what this does. We've got a couple properties on the street that are simply, have no way to develop or redevelop their properties. We have one lot. It is about 23,000 square feet, the average size of a lot on our street. Can't be used for anything except a parking lot because the current zoning that doesn't fit what we are won't permit it. We have another property that has a 66% depreciation. It's in that bad a condition, it's a very old property. It makes absolutely no sense to try to rehab that property. 66% is the maximum that appraisers are allowed to depreciate. That building would have to be literally torn to the studs. The bottom couple feet replaced. The studs would have to be sistered with six-inch studs instead of four-inch studs because if you're doing that much construction, you now have to meet code. And it's just absolutely not practical to do it. The owner would like to replace it. And my own personal want from this has to do with setbacks. Personally, I'd like to put a greenhouse in. I can do it by right, but I can't put it where I want to put it by right. I'd really like to put it between the road and my pool so that, you know, it blocks the view of the pool, but I can't put it there. So, I mean, those are the personal sides of why the community is asking for this. The zoning is compatible with what's around the center. It's not, you know, it's not odd, it's not spot zoning, there's 35 properties here. So we're asking for your support on it. I'll take questions.
How much of that falls under the historic district for the center?
None of it.
So it stops at the cemetery, the historic district?
Yeah. Yeah. There's a lot of houses that have, you know, that are on the historic register because they're that old, but it's not historic district.
And then my second question, if it did get switched to RC and a homeowner did demo their house, then how large, how much larger a house could they build than that lot that is already there?
It depends on the individual property, but the coverage requirements, you know, the coverage limitations, how much, how many square feet a house you can have is based on a percentage of the lot size. It's a little bit higher for RC than it is for RB, which kind of isn't surprising because of the lot sizes, but it's not substantially bigger.
So someone could put a significantly larger house on the lot than currently is there, depending on the lot.
Well, depending on the current size, well, depending on the current size of the house, you know, I mean, some of the newer houses are very tiny ranches. So they could, certainly. Some of the older houses, first of all, you'd have to go through Historic Commission to get permission to modify it at all. And once you had that, you know, my expectation is that if you were doing anything, you might be putting an addition on the back of it or something. Because the Historic Commission's going to, you know, have something to say about what you do to the outside of it.
And my third question, last Springtown meeting, there was a thing about changing, I know a big impact was like the Westlands neighborhood allowing people to build, like people want to put a garage on or a green porch. Would this neighborhood have been impacted if that had passed town meeting in the spring? Do you remember? I forget what the article said.
Well, I think every neighborhood that is, has undersized lots would be impacted by it. It was, that was a bylaw change that was put forward by the ZBA to give them more flexibility to approve some of these improvements that people want to make that they don't have the ability to approve now, you know. It is, I mean, we're really limiting, limiting our older neighborhoods with zoning that doesn't fit what's on the ground and in limiting the amount of reinvestment in those properties and simply maintenance in those properties. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, yeah, what's the motivation for converting to two-family?
What's the motivation? Well, I've got one. It's, as I get older, it's really nice to have that income, that extra income, to be honest. But a lot of these houses, a lot of the older houses, you know, are like 3,000, 3,500, 4,000 square foot houses. And, you know, it's nice to be able to make use of some of that space. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
The next article, Article 21, is a second and final zoning article, and this one's sponsored by the Planning Board. And this is straightforward. It's a request to add adult social daycare under the town's use of allowable uses in the community. So what it would do is this would amend the town's use regulation to add adult daycare. And you can see it'd be allowed in what the PB means, by a special permit from the Planning Board, in basically certain commercial areas of the community. So that's what's being requested here. And again, Planning Board will be at town meeting to present its request. But I think the reason it probably wasn't in the zoning code was, you know, adult daycare was a rather new phenomenon, and now we're sort of seeing those requests come into the Article 22 is a request to amend the town's general bylaws, and this is regarding the posting location for town meeting warrants. And this was brought forward by the town clerk. In the course of her activity, she noted that there really is no specificity in the town charter or bylaws of where warrants are posted for town meetings. It's sort of been by tradition, but yet over time, we've modified voting places and so forth. And so it was thought appropriate to codify where town meeting warrants are posted, and that's what this would do is, so basically, it would require that town meeting warrants be posted at each of the town's designated polling locations, police station, fire station, libraries, and town offices. So that's the request under this article. Again, pretty straightforward, yes.
Is there anything in that that has to be posted digitally on the website?
No.
Should it be?
See, it goes back to state statute and where the old paper things are. We do post it digitally, but there's no requirement to. But it's, like you said, the more questions is why do we still use paper and do things paperly, but that's why it's done. But if you want to, you can make an amendment on Monday night to add that, it's not a bad, not a bad suggestion. Thank you. Any other questions?
Do you still have to notify the others?
Right, no, this is just town meeting warrants. This isn't for like hearings or anything, this is just the warrants for meetings that are held by town meeting. Article 23 is another request by the town clerk, and this would amend the town charter regarding the number of nominating signatures for town meeting representatives. And basically, it would reduce it from 25 to 10. And the rationale for this is that the... The idea would be, we want to encourage people to run for town meeting. We've not had many contested races. When there aren't nominees on the ballot, it ends up being a write-in situation. And then what happens is, is you have all these issues of ties and so forth. And so the idea would be to reduce the threshold from 25 to 10. And the clerk looked to other communities and saw, well, what are their signature thresholds for representative town meetings in those communities that have representative town meeting form of government? And as you can see, it's predominantly 10 signatures on the list there. So that's the request. Again, if this were approved by town meeting, it would have to go to the ballot for final approval at next spring's election in six months. So that's the request under this article. Yes, Tom?
The only thing that happened was, you know, as they say, it was 25, but they always recommend they get 10, 15 more because there's some, some of the signatures may just allow for various reasons.
Exactly. So if this is down to 10, you probably would get 20. Right. Just so that way you don't, you know, get disqualified for not having, you know, the number of signatures. Article 24 is another straightforward amendment to the bylaws, and this is one that I brought forward because we sort of had a real-life experience with this at the Select Board in the last couple of months. And this has to do with the town's bylaw pertaining to utility polls. And what we're seeking to do here is delete a section of the bylaw that is no longer enforceable. The Select Board recently scheduled a public hearing with National Grid to remove double polls across the community. And National Grid, you know, objected, and Town Council pointed out that the Select Board and the town no longer have the authority to seek enforcement activity against utilities for double polls under existing state law. And therefore, if we leave this bylaw in place, which I'll show you the text of the bylaw, and you have it in your handout, what's going to happen is people are going to read the bylaw and say, well, why isn't the Select Board taking action, you know, and requiring these double polls to remove within 180 days? So what this would do is rescind or repeal this section of the bylaw. And again, it goes to show you that what happens over time is, you know, town bylaws get approved, and then court actions and state or federal legislation or federal court action occurs, and then we may have on our books situations that are no longer enforceable. The most recent example of that was about a decade ago when the Supreme Court came out with the sign, public speech requirements, and therefore, we had to amend our signed bylaw in terms of political signs to no longer, you know, restrict it to a time period because that was no longer constitutional. And in this case, the subsequent enactments in state law have precluded towns from taking enforcement action against utilities on double polls. Yes?
Is there any way to get action taken? Is there any path for this?
Well, that would be a further change in state law. I can tell you that cities and towns have complained to the legislature for multiple years about the problem of double polls in the community, and it never makes it out of the legislature. The only other thing I would tell you is the utilities have very highly-paid lobbyists who work at the State House, and it's a very hard thing to overcome.
Right, not, not full of state?
No, there's nothing that we can do. There's no pathway. And we tried our pathway, and we were basically told, no, you're not. Now, I can tell you, in fairness, and recently, we've had some cooperation from National Grid in terms of addressing this, and the Select Board continues that process in real time. So we're hoping that the double polls in the community get reduced basically to zero or that the ones that do occur are removed in a timely manner. But up until this time, the numbers were unfortunately very staggering. Yes, Tom?
I'm sure the tax polls are just...
Yes, no, that's the tax, the utility polls are taxed, and those tax amounts are established by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. So yes, they are, yeah, they are taxed, but... Article 25 is a local action adoption, meaning it's a, the state has enacted a law and allows a community to adopt a provision of state law. In this case, it's the adoption of a specialized energy code. This article's been submitted by the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and I'm going to step aside so that you can hear directly the presentation from the committee this evening to help prepare you for Monday night's meeting. So in the beginning slides, I'll show you the text of the article that it would be adopted, but I think what you'll now receive would be the presentation in terms of why this is being brought before you and what the impact would be. So I'm turning the microphone over to Badri.
Thank you, Paul. This is a practice of my speaking skills in front of the microphone here, but I will not be the one talking on Monday or Thursday when presenting it. It's really my committee colleague who should be speaking. Obviously, he did not know that, or I did not know that I will be speaking here tonight. But anyways, we are, I'll go through the slides and talk through this, but I'll give first a, maybe a minute overview of what I'm going to talk about, and then walk you through the impact or where it stands. We are an advisory committee to the Select Board to get us to the town adopted resolution back in June 2021, which established our committee as a work committee to try and advise the Select Board on getting to net zero 2050, the state law, and how to get towards that. I say towards that, we'll discuss that as to when it comes about that. So we have several recommendations that are adopted from state specifically that are tuned to make some movement in the direction of net zero. This code is offered by the state. It only impacts new construction. It only impacts new construction, full-on new home constructions. It does not affect additions, renovations, all of that. That is not what it impacts. It is actually minimally impacting to Chemsford, the town of Chemsford. We'll talk about that a little bit in some of the slides, the backup that's been provided, why it's minimally impactful for Chemsford. But it does benefit Chemsford by helping us meet the checklist points of a potential new program that the state has developed for what's known as the Green Communities 2.0 Elite Tier. So we'll get there. So with that, I will try and walk you through the slides, and hopefully, this thing will work. And it does. You will read on the first slide some of the key pillars of action. Improve the amount of clean energy. Improve the reduction of the building emissions, which is the biggest contributor. Try and help with the transportation emissions as it's possible over time. Take a holistic look at how things move around or what we can do around that. And maybe use zoning laws to help improve the, thank you, Helen and Peter, and to help improve any zoning bylaws or laws to help put things together closer by for people to be able to access these services. With that said, that would be the key pillars. The next slide basically talks about the history of the adoption of the stretch code, Green Communities. We adopted the Green Communities Stretch Code back in 2011, effective January 1. And we are currently in the 10th edition of the stretch code. And we are automatically enrolled in it. And the article, not tonight, on town meeting night, will be, this article, if the town meeting adopts, will bring in the specialized opt-in code that is only for the new construction, including that. Okay. This slide will talk about the background. I already summarized that for you. Building emissions is a big portion of Chemsford's greenhouse gas emissions. This article directly does not bend that curve immediately, but it does something to new construction. Starts with that. This article, as the state intends, is enable electrification, smarter electrification choices, very specifically, without taking away your choice for mixed fuel, fossil fuels, without taking away your current choice. Okay? I repeat that. The benefits, again, is it protects new buildings that come online. If in the future, somebody wants to use an electric appliance, equivalent appliance or heating, cooling equipment, whatever the, heating equipment, not cooling, cooling is electric, heating equipment or other things, you're pre-wiring the house. That's number one condition. Number two condition, if you're a single family or a very large family, oh, a single-family home, if you're large or small, you're only, you're asked to put appropriately-sized solar panel on the roof. And there is exceptions for sites that have shading issues or if your roof is not of a particular size because you built a tiny home, that you decided to live in a tiny home. So there are exceptions for that in the rule, too. So it's just asking you, pre-wire the outlets where you have a gas appliance, which is good, and a small amount of solar, depending on the house size that you built and the location and coverage on it. The third piece is for multifamily homes. And we'll get to that. I've talked about the details in this slide. You can go over them. Yes?
On the next slide, you say new commercial material. You don't say new residential. I noticed before it said new, but if there is an opportunity to modify that, I'm probably
I will, I will do that. I probably forgot it in so many edits that I ended up doing. But no, there is a new commercial has at the very top.
Right, well, in the next one, it says new commercial. Well, on this one.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just saying, probably were new in driver type of that.
Okay, thank you very much. I will do that. Thank you very much. Because previously, this slide in a version said new low-rise residential. But there is that little blast out there. Thank you for that. So this summarizes what I just mentioned, this slide, essentially. For small homes under 4,000 square foot, under 4,000 square foot, which is still a very big home, you have to be able to meet a pre-wiring and the onsite solar requirement. There is a difference of what's known as a HERS rating, which is three, a point score system, which is three, a difference of three, which shouldn't be very difficult to meet with the current construction codes, basically. But it's just a difference of three. The electric homes, if you choose electric homes, it's 45 come July 24, 2024. If it's a gas house, it's 42, but not a big, it's just a little bit more tighter to build, not tremendously tighter to build on that. So that's what's discussed. The numbers are given here. You can peruse it. If you're a home, if you build a 4,000-plus-square-foot home, which is, and when I say 4,000-plus-square-foot, it is conditioned space. I'll have to refer to what the building department says, but I think it's heating and cooling. Your garage doesn't technically count there. So if you have a very large garage, that doesn't count. But it's 4,000-square-foot of conditioned living space. Then that's where it gets a little bit stringent, where now from a HERS 42, you have to achieve what's known as a zero, which means, the state just provided me a slide that says, you probably have to put an 8-kilowatt panel system because you have a big enough house. You probably put 8-kilowatt panel system on top. Now, remember, solar panels on your rooftop do produce electricity that you will have to consume for the rest of the house anyways. So you do have the benefit that you are actually investing in a solar panel that's getting you, if not all of the electricity, much of the electricity free, equally for now. So that's the other side benefit of it. So again, your choice is not taken away at this point. So that's what it gets us. For new commercial, nothing really changes for them, except if you have mixed fuels, which is fossil fuel essentially, for heating and cooling and other things, please put solar on rooftop or what the solar potential of the lot and the commercial building is. Not a big difference for commercial operators. If you take an example, I think there was a few, maybe a few months ago, there was a proposed warehouse or something on Billerica Road, 270 Billerica Road or something, which was 85,000-square-foot footprint rooftop space or 85,000-square-foot. Under the new code, they would have to put solar panel on top or on the parking lot on the side. Not a problem in general because the roofs are constructed and well to handle that anyways. That's only asked that this would have. Please?
New municipal buildings fall under new commercial or is that a separate category?
New municipal, complete new municipal buildings, yes, would fall under this because we would adopt this.
And that would include new schools?
Yes, it would give, include schools if you build a new construction school on that. Good point. A tangent comment on that. I believe the MSBA provides.
They don't fund solar.
Say again?
They don't fund solar.
No, but they give you, but they give you 3% or 4% on the base as an additional rebate to meet the specialized code. That is my current understanding of the aspect. So it's 3% to 4% on a big school project, may or may not be big. But remember, you may be able to take other actions to reduce the impact point in the design that automatically gets you a better performance that we may not require that. So that talks about that. Multifamily homes, by the way, the ones that are 12,000-square-foot do not, as far as I understand, other than doing passive house build. And there is a slide on the passive house at the very back on the FAQs. I think it's the third last or something like that. Do not need to, as far as I know and understand the principle. And I will continue to learn between now and Monday to clarify for everyone. It does not have to go fossil fuel-free. They just have to have pre-wiring if they do that. Okay? There is exceptions for commercial buildings for high-efficiency, large quantity hot water and stuff like that. So there is those exceptions there. With that said, there we go. Let's point it here. Good. On the left is the proposed, it came out actually last summer, I think. 22 summer was the Green Communities 2.0 because Green Communities have now been there for a dozen years and over 250 or 290 communities have adopted it. And at this point, they are looking to revise it. And under the previous administration, a climate leaders program was created. The climate leaders will be the top, some X percentage point of communities, essentially. These are the criteria on the left top of, on the left side of the slides is on the left top of it are the four or five criteria points. The last one is the specialized opt-in code. Chemsford takes boxes all the other ones. And the last one, adoption of this, will get us that final checkpoint to allow that. A good vote or anything like that from community, and we have very many different things, would also satisfy the community engagement portion in some ways because the community is generally supportive of the action. So that's something that the committee and Select Board would write if such a program were to come out. We are given to understand that the administration is looking to release that game. Is looking to, it's potential. But it's looking to release something of this kind in the coming winter season, basically. So come anywhere between Thanksgiving to February, March, they're expecting to put this program out, which allows us to go for grants, which is on the potential grants list on the right bottom of the left chart. These are the other towns that have been listed in the box table that have already adopted this, and their effective dates start in, some start in January, some start in July. I've also listed for the benefit on the right side of it where Chemsford's adoption timeline stands and the other communities there are. The last two communities in September were Rooster and Northampton. Northampton is around somewhere close to Amherst area in Western Mass. So they also have adopted this. We will be, based on these numbers, we will be either the 21st, 22nd, or the 23rd community to vote on this and adopt, which is still within the top 7% of the number of entities in the Commonwealth and within the top 23% of the state population covered and the first one in the NEMCOG Regional Planning Group, basically, to go for this checkbox. So that's the detail on that. There's the grant program also allows us to say, hey, you can have a climate coordinator or something, but what we would ask for probably most likely is a funding for some resource to help us reconduct a campaign on solarize or rooftop solar campaign and do what's appropriate to support in-town anybody who wants to go to heat pumps because there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of different sets of people, different opinions. You need a sort of a coach or somebody to help you with it, somebody to organize it. That's the kind of grant that we would go for because that helps slowly get the ball moving in general towards getting the right kind of support, independent, neutral, sort of town-based, rather than you getting a lot of mailers from some people and all of them explaining things their way just because there's a state incentive program available to do that. So that's the kind of information. This, again, summarizes what all we have said, what we were going to tell you, what we were telling, we told you what you told, and this is summarizing the same thing. If you're a new construction, this just gets you on an enabling path. Choice is not taken away from you. If you are the builder or the homeowner who wants to rebuild your home or you decided to buy a plot of land and said, I'm going to have it built, doesn't take away choice. I love my Gastow, I'm going to use it. Please go ahead and use it. Please invest in a small solar panel utility on top to produce free electricity for a good, long number of years. Essentially, the goal is to try and increase the basis for Chemsford and position us in time for any opening program that shows up in, before spring, essentially. Gets us the ability to write grants. It obviously is sending a market signal in some ways. As we all know, workforce development and clean energy technology and decarbonization or at least heat pump technology, these are all signals that we send through workforce. People do need to be seeing that this is a poll. So that's becoming critical in there. It does move a tiny bit, but more in the future as if and, if and when more new homes come into Chemsford at that point. But it also is minimally impactful to homes that are built today. I haven't included costs here, but I will get you a link if anybody is interested. But that's the end of the slides. Definitions, the number of homes built in Chemsford. This right-side color chart, I've tried to annotate that a little bit here, which is the HERS rating system that all homes have been using for the last two, three years or four, four, five years. I don't know whenever the last big update was. And the code is going to 42, 45. That 42 is for gas or mixed-fuel homes. And 45 HERS rating is for the electric homes. If you're over 4,000-square-foot, you have to meet the HERS zero rating, which is at the bottom. But that's usually by putting a nice panel system on top that produces enough electricity or possibly more electricity than you need if you are highly efficient. This is SSHS database information access. We had one home that was over 4,000-square-foot. I'd like to meet the person who built nice, big homes. And four homes that were less than 4,000-square-foot. These maybe have been single-family homes, not multifamily townhouses, and was pulled out, so maybe there was a difference there. But I think all of, most of the homes in Chemsford that are being built are maybe 2,000-square-foot, 2,500-square-foot type of homes at best particularly. This is a study that was done a little while ago. The data continues to be published. This was published, I think, in 22 summer, finally. And collected data from 30 homes. And the black, on the second column there, there is a highlighted portion called "single-family" that represents about 2,500 square foot, gross square foot of single-family homes that reported their cost structure. And at the bottom, on the first two columns or three columns, is the multifamily home design cost structures that were reported as it, based on these, not the specialized code, but the code that's being, that's coming online at this particular point. And based on that, the cost structure relative to that was relative to base code and what was previously there is mostly zero, many minus 1% or cheaper, and maximum of 1%, mostly on the multifamily home structures. On the other slides thereafter is the passive house features, essentially for multifamily, and the number of housing units that the state already has on the passive house style of building for multifamily plus-inclusive. It's, the chart here shows 10,000, but conversation with state and other people have indicated that the numbers are approaching 16,000 units at this particular point. So that is the backup information there. I'll go back one more slide. These are the costs from the passive house challenge, basically, that Mass C E C conducted. All the listings for the various cost structures is located. These are pre-incentives numbers. So with incentives, these numbers actually come to zero or under 1.5%, so to speak. The next slide is a slide. The next slide is a slide with the DOER FAQs and a QR code. If you are a very mobile person, or the links are available that you can click or type it in or do a Google search on or your favorite search engine to do that. It answers questions around solar panel recycling initiatives, backup power requirements, solar shading, and rooftop solar why it's important in Massachusetts going forward as a policy definition. And questions around grid modernization or whether or not the grid can handle is also included in the next slide. If the slide moves, there we go, in color. So National Grid just submitted a $2 billion 10-year plan to upgrade modernization of technology and infrastructure. Eversource did something very similar, and it's going through public comment period until June, January, sorry, or something around there. So that's the background. We've got a lot of details. Thank you for listening to this. If you have questions, I'm here, I'm here afterwards. Please go ahead.
Under new construction, I'd like to, did Rafford say that if I do a teardown and rebuild that whole into this category as well?
It is my understanding that a teardown under the Chemsford building code is considered a new construction.
Okay. And extensions or additions to a house requiring new?
All come, all come under the existing stretch code, which we are already adopted in, so refer to the stretch code for that in the building department to answer that question, really.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
On slide 147, it says at the bottom that this is a table of all the construction houses. Probably goes back to a pre-workout. For the majority of single homes, they go only pre-wiring and the solar PV on site. What does that?
Thank you very much, my English. Essentially, what it means is that, what we wanted to say that was you only need a small PV system or a lot, depending on you have to go to HERS zero. Because your single-family homes here, there are four single-family homes under 4,000 and one large 4,000 square foot. The mindset was probably when I wrote this up as a comment was, hey, most small homes have to have a small PV. The big, the big home, 4,000 square foot, isn't very common. So all you have to do is if you choose the mixed fuel options, four homes out of the five would have had the PV and the pre-wiring. I didn't think about.
So you would have to install solar panels if you had the merit to have the gas stove? Is that correct?
Yes, you have to have. If you choose to have a gas equipment in there, you have a 4 kilowatt solar panel on a new build. And just a couple of points. Market references, Nine Acton Road, that's right behind the library, that's coming up by the, the old karate place, but the Gulf Gas Station is going all-electric. I have heard, but I have to clarify still, Paul, I don't know if the details were available, but UMass Lowell West Campus is all going all-electric or something like that, but I'm not sure if these stoves are.
Except for the gas grills, he said he thought that maybe the gas grills.
But if the gas grills, but in the multifamily, the gas grills are allowed to be, I think, because they follow the passive house standard process or a tighter condition, they don't. And he may, they may pull the permit before '24, so they may be exempt from that also at that particular point. So they depend on what, I have to confirm from him, I don't have the details from him. But if it's a small unit home, all-electric homes actually have, I think, $20,000 rebates from Mass Save or $10,000, $15,000 rebates from Mass Save, plus the tax deduction, builders' tax deduction from the federal IRA Act for the next 10 years or something like that. So it really brings the, all-electric homes are down.
Is this different than the article that was drawn from this meeting?
Yes, this, this is the same article that we would have brought in the Spring Town Meeting article. The one mistake, yes, is the same article, there is no change in that. The reason we pulled that, the reason we pulled out is mea culpa. We incorrectly said this applies to additions and got confused. So it doesn't apply, that is part of the stretch code. This does not apply to additions and modifications in that. Say again?
Page 146, maybe I'm reading wrong, sorry. It said the very last line, additions slash renovations are covered. Let's just define what it is.
Additions and renovations are all covered under the stretch code that is already in effect. This does not cover, specialized code does not touch anything to do with additions and renovations. So whatever the stretch code allows it to do, that's what it, whatever was defined on that, that's where it is done.
Question, please, for Paul. What we're being asked to vote on is to actually add this to the code?
Yes.
It's not replacing anything?
Correct, correct. Approving this article would not replace anything, it would add, exactly.
Has the people who enforce our building codes reviewed this and give any feedback on it?
Yes, that's, it's, that's not an issue of code enforcement, there's no concerns there.
Please, Nancy.
Yes, please. On slide 139, motivation for adopting specialized code.
Yep.
Background, there's a goal that says Mass 2050 Plan is greater than 95% of all buildings are all rendered by 2050. Could you speak to that?
So that's a general aspiration by the state law, essentially, right? They have a law that they have sector-wise growth and actions towards that. When you talk about a 2050 greater than, the key components of a home's carbon footprint or greenhouse gas emissions come from two places, two, two big places, depending on how you look at it, maybe three. Number one is your heating element, basically. There is a current, that's why Mass Save currently has an incentive program to slowly begin to help people to choose heat pump technology, cold package heat pump technology that can address most of that concern. In those retrofits, you are allowed, and by the way, even for new homes, you are allowed to have gas backup generators. In the event that you want to have gas backup generators, they are considered allowed in the specialized code. In the retrofits, you are allowed to have your primary as a heat pump, which is electric, highly efficient, and then an emergency backup if you choose to, so to speak, if you have extreme conditions and the, because the older homes are slightly not so tight, then you can augment with a backup fossil fuel for peak demand type of situations in that sense. So their outlined roadmap is more about a long-term vision plan to see how far they can get, and they will try to, that's the state plan that was released late last year or summer of last year, essentially, under the previous administration.
So if the goal was over 95% by 2050, where is help for that now?
Probably 1% relative to the numbers.
So if these codes, these energy codes are only being implemented on new construction, and we have, I don't know, 16,000 some housing units.
Yes.
Building maybe six a year or maybe more than that, sort of large area. How do we think we're going to make it?
So if you noticed, one of the slides said why we wanted to get to specialized code as a checkbox and aim for getting some grant money, further grant money, is to have a more dedicated person to run a solarized Chemsford, recreate the solarized Chemsford campaign, and to also run a clean heat or a heat pumps campaign, right? To help support, make sure the decisions are right, so you're making, you have some independent help, not just somebody from Mass Save selling you, not Mass Save itself, but all the people just selling you something or the other. We want to try and create some infrastructure to support you going there. It may be possible, and I cannot speak where, whether or not this will happen, but at some point, the stretch codes may mandate that, or the state says in 2040 it assesses a few things. But the big levers that we have today, the quick and big levers that we have today, and it feeds into the solar story a little bit, Nancy, is, number one, if you can consume clean energy, then that's good. Clean energy has different classes or not classes, variants of it to think about. If you have rooftop solar, it's probably the best because you produce, you consume literally in the local grid or in your neighborhood grid, which means you're reducing peak demand out from the grid and the immediate installation points that the grid is supposed to be rushing out and building. It is actually helpful to put more rooftop, and the last link that I gave you there in the Mass Autobahn Report actually talks about 30 gigawatts of the 50 gigawatts that Massachusetts require is possible through a combination of policy-supported rooftop and parking lot and commercial rooftop spaces. That would be the biggest driver and move to get to a lot of clean energy running. Supporting that upgrade of supply and energy is the heat pump and battery technologies that come in. So this is a marathon, this is a very long marathon. I know this is, looks like this code doesn't do much, but remember, new buildings that are coming in, high-density buildings that are coming in, what the state is trying to do is to say, let's start to bend the curve out from the future and build backwards and not redo things. It's really trying to reduce the rate of new growth significantly while they are trying to catch up with the old infrastructure to come up and replenish over 30 years.
A follow-up to my previous question. This is in addition to our code. Are we adopting it? I'll, I'll use an internet analogy, it was a hyperlink to the code the state has, are we making a copy of? My question is, two years from now, when the state changes it and makes requiring pump for everybody or something, as one of these codes, I'm not saying they will, just posing it. Does that mean we automatically get all the new things that come in? So we're voting for hitching our wagon to the states?
Every, yes, it is, it is on, and.
And that's what's happened the last several years with the stretch code?
Yeah, it would apply to the stretch code and this.
Would apply to almost all of this. The other pieces, I will time correct this, this is not an official statement in any particular manner. I happened to read a page today or yesterday, I forget now, and I'm trying to figure out where, but the act behind the specialized code creation is for new construction, basically. So the new construction could be the one you want, the stretch code.
Next session, there could be another act that says something, something different.
It may be, but specialized will be, specialized, they haven't tended to move the code basis in that sense. They, they authorized the clean, the stretch code and continued.
In a way, we're seeing a little bit to our legislative.
Peter?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Hi, everybody. I'm a member of the committee with fire. I just want to mention that the feds and the state, this is my opinion, have not been doing anything crazy in their planning like, okay, we're going to mandate electric vehicles or we're going to mandate heat pumps. The planners that were really following, around making this up, kind of following the state lead, the planners all realize it's a long haul, as Bobby said, transition. Back to your question, the idea is if you've got a good fossil fuel furnace, you know, wait till it blows up and you need to do something new, I'm sorry, bad word, but the idea is it's going to be a long transition. There's been no appetite that I have seen on any of our state planners to mandate something that could cause a lot of pain, like, like all of a sudden you got all, I don't know, fossil fuel furnace, and a lot of people forced to do a heat pump. They're not thinking that way, they just not.
I can.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Please.
I can tell you for the UMass property, yes, that's what's held up the UMass property, is that the state A office is not talking to the office and they're not going together and these developers are now having a fit about it. That's number one. Number two, in this thing, you never said how these solar panels are going to be treated and taken care of when these companies that are selling them go out of business. And it's costing these families $5,000 to $10,000 to take them off to put on a roof and $5,000 to put them back on. So I think we have a long way to go before we can even get to that and knowing what's down the road 50 years from now. So you want to clean it up 50 years, tell me how you're going to clean it up when these things expire.
If you follow the last, but second one I've given, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection has already launched a work stream on solar panel recycling requirements.
And a person takes $5,000 and takes them off?
Hold on, hold on, I understand that. Remember, the solar panel requirements are on a new home with a new roof. And therefore, a panel needs to only come in on boat on top once the new roof is on, and the roof life is approximately 20 to 25 years at least.
And you don't think those panels aren't going to last that long?
The panels are going to last long that long in many cases. There are panels that have lasted statistically more than 25 years. There are onesie-twosies that do go off and you have to replace them from time to time.
I know we want to get out of everything in China states. Paul comes up with, we're going to have a committee to see how everything is going to happen on the way out years from now, and you're coming in with this without the end result. I think it's not working very well in my mind.
I will not debate it at this particular point. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think, okay. Paul, you are the moderator, you, you are the time allocator.
I just want to respect all people's time, and we're venturing into debate, not information.
I can, I can talk to you afterwards, Nancy, happily.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious whether there's any coordination between your committee pushing solar panels and the tree committee, any of these?
Repeat question?
So the question is, is there any coordination between our committee that is recommending solar panels and the tree committee that is trying to protect the trees? The short answer is yes, and that's why if you look at the solar shading, there's solar shading, there is something, and we have been working to figure out a tree policy also to support this.
I don't want to answer your messages. All right, I just need a couple minutes. I, I'm talking literally, not even that. There's two, two easement articles finish the warrant. The first one is an easement at Nine Acton Road. This, this is the location right across from Bartlett Park in the center where they raised the old bowling alley, and they're putting in a residential multifamily development condos. Part of the approval by the planning board, including an easement, which was called for in the Center Village Overlay District Bylaw to provide enhancements to the center, there's this easement plan that's been recorded. The town meeting by statute under state law has to accept an easement for it to become There are, it's going to allow access across the left-hand side of the property, but there's no plans to utilize the easement, and I'm going to show you.
Is the left-hand side next to the gas station?
No, the opposite side. I'm going to show you this, I'm going to show you this right side. There's the, this is Nine Acton Road. That's, that's the former building that's no longer there. Obviously, this would be the library, this would be coming through the center, past Fishbones, you know, obviously that's 27, that would be going past the library on the side. This is the building here, and now it's hard to see, and you'll have the big screens here on Monday night. This is the property, the easement runs along this left-hand side right here, and in fact, by the planning board's approval, they also put a stockade fence on this side and tree plantings. The easement basically runs from Acton Road to the edge of the property line. Now, the key is the edge of the property line because in the next slide, you will see the property that from there is Griss Mill. So Griss Mill owns their, obviously, property and parking lot, as well as both sides of the brook. So this is an easement that basically just cuts across this property, but there's no plans to utilize it and there's nothing going to happen until such time that the town, with cooperation of the adjoining property owners and others, were to do something along this side of the brook. So basically, it's an easement for potential future use, there's no active plans, and basically. And basically, it'll sit almost like a paper street. It'll just sit there as an easement at this point in time. So that's, that's, and that's, this is the actual plan that shows you the layout of the, of the project. Again, this is Acton Road, heading towards Acton to the left. This is the easement right here, in this jotted line. And again, this is the fencing and this screening. So basically, you've got an easement that goes from here to the edge of the property line, which doesn't even make it to the brook, but it's owned by Griss Mill. And again, it's meant, I think the intent was in the bylaw and in the approval of this project was to provide an easement for potential future use, not knowing what that may be, but, but the planning would recognize is it's a lot easier to acquire an easement at project construction approval than to try to do something at a later date. So that's what's being requested under this article. Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm confused.
Oh, you were on the planning, were you on the planning board when this was approved?
I know, and I started to not remember. We made an easement there, and specifically discussing that we didn't want it, so.
Not only, not only was it approved, it was, it was been recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So it was part of the planning board approval and decision, along with everything else that was done in terms of.
So the plant behind there that is under the control of the plant conservation trust?
No, no, that's not here. This is all Griss Mill, right here. This is all Griss Mill. And, and just, you know, to orient people, this, this would be the rail trail up here, and, you know, and this is the pathway that was approved for the Griss Mill, the, the brook walk. But no, Griss Mill owns both sides, that's the Griss Mill property. I mean, that, that, that map, I didn't draw, that map comes from your GIS system of the town.
That's not a public access to go right, it doesn't allow people to just walk in and start looking at the brook or anything, or does it have?
Well, no, it only, the easement would only allow the, the town to use it if, if they, if they wanted to do something with it.
It's only for the town's usage when it needs to go in.
Right.
There is no physical marking that says, hey, this is a way, or anything.
No. Okay. All right, and then the last article, and this one's even simpler. This is an easement on Old Farm Way, sewer and drainage easements. The, here, Old Farm Way is a subdivision built generation ago. Just to give you where it's oriented, this is the Parker School over here. So you can see why, when the subdivision was built in the cul-de-sac, there was an easement that runs across here, and obviously allows children and others to get to and from the Parker School and the playgrounds. We were out there meeting with the, this past summer, with the homeowners association representative and the property owner who lives here. And basically, it's now starting to deteriorate. And as we looked into it further, the property owner wanted to abandon the easement, the town's right of easement over there, and we said, well, look, that wouldn't mean you have to go back to the planning board, because that was a condition of the approval. But more importantly, what we discovered is we found out there were no easements for the town's sewer or drainage lines. So this, that's what's being requested from town meeting, is to approve easements for the town sewer and drainage work. The fire chief has not expressed any concerns if this were to be abandoned. So I expect the next step would be, the town gets to record the easements for sewer and drainage, and then at a future date, they come and basically abandon the paving and such for the easement. The, the intent way back when was to allow fire access to come in this way, but it's never been utilized, and the fire chief has no concerns with it. So that's it, folks, that's the articles. We look forward to seeing you on Monday evening. Again, if you have any questions or concerns that we can help you about as you prepare over the next few days, please don't hesitate to call my office, and we'll go from there. Thank you, have a good night.